And I'd like to call a regular school board meeting to order. Once again, just a reminder, we do record these meetings.
Yeah.
First item on the agenda. Accept a motion for approval of the regular minutes from the June 14th school board meeting?
Can I make an amendment? I was not present.
The minutes show that everyone's here.
Yeah.
I'll put it on the table. I'll make that motion.
Okay, thanks Matt. Any other corrections?
Who seconded?
Oh, sorry. Can I get a second for that?
A second.
Thanks Jasmine. Motion by Matt, second by Jasmine. And the correction is Erin was not present.
Oh, yeah.
Did you catch that? Thanks Erin. I didn't have anything else. Anyone? All in favor with said corrections, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstentions?
Stand.
Accept a motion for approval of the non-public minutes from the June 14th school board meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Matt, could we get a second?
Sorry.
Thanks Brian. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions?
Abstentions.
And finally, I'll accept a motion to approve the return to public minutes from the June 14th school board meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
A second.
Thanks Jasmine. All in favor, aye. Aye, oppose, abstentions?
We went really fast there. The non-public meetings show Erin present as well.
It's in the floor folder.
Oh, this right was.
Okay, let's re-vote on those. All in favor of accepting those in minutes with that final correction, taking Erin's name off, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstentions?
Stand.
Correspondence, Judy, did you have any?
No, I do not have any.
Brian, did you guys have anything else? Oh, sorry. I jumped the gun there. Deb?
Just a couple of things going on. It's, well, the process was starting. In the middle of ending one year and beginning a new fiscal year, a lot of orders right now are being processed for the new school year. Usually if we don't have the orders in by like July 15, things are backordered, so. Got a lot of paper in my office right now. Also, setting up new payrolls for the new year, so it's just a lot of time and busy work right now. Some grants we're trying to get in for the new year. And that's about it.
Thanks Deb. Judy?
Okay, so, in your packet, I put in the memo that in your packet you had policy DGB, however you did not, so I just passed that out to you. That policy is the adoption policy. I just explained in the middle what that referred to. It's just the timeline between, it just happened, that was a discussion at the last meeting, so I figured I'd pull the policy so you could see the actual policy as well. And I did speak at the last meeting and state that the, that was 30 days in between, and the policy says 14 days. So I just wanted to make that correction. Also, Jeff Tyree will be invited to present at the, he will be coming to the July 19th meeting to present and explain the report from the roof. He's the engineer that reviewed the roof, but he will describe and explain the different options that he recommended and the impact of those options, so, you know, we'll be able to ask questions and find out what.
Was he working on a new alternative option at one point?
He was at one point, but I believe that is no longer the case.
Okay.
He has the three options, and, am I correct on that, Mark?
Yes, at the moment, three.
So, there's the three options, and he'll go through that with us on, with the board on the 19th.
Okay.
Is there other information in the memo that we can go through in each section of the board?
Okay. Any questions for Judy?
Thank you.
Thanks Judy. Bob?
Pratt Institute started this week with their activities for the arts, which is, this is the 34th year they've been in our school system, and it's an opportunity for our students and the community to be a part of their program. They're here for three weeks. Summer school for elementary and middle and high schools, that's on the 5th of July. We're making final, final preps, preparations for summer school. This afternoon, administration, guidance, and Lauren McGinley, we met, was on the professional, professional development committee. We met today to kind of finalize programs that are going to be going on this summer. And there's a number of, number of programs that teachers, staff members from K to 12 have an opportunity to participate in. We have a program called Playworks, which has to do with recess supervision management activities, which we are combining with some other schools in the south country, so we're going to host it. And we have about 10 of our staff members are going to be participating in that. It's a, it's a two-day, it's a two-day session. In addition to that, I'll mention to them work with responsive classroom. We're going to be having Sandy Kent, who is going to be here doing work with project-based learning and things connected to competency-based education. So, this is prior to her in-service day. So we have a number of things which are really essential as we move forward, that we really can't even fit into the in-service days, that, an opportunity for staff members to participate in that. Mr. Quinn has been working recently on the finalization of the middle and high school schedules for next year. As we've mentioned numerous times, that anytime we tweak one section of a schedule, whether it's elementary, middle, or high school, all those other, the other two are affected by it, but we think that maybe, I've mentioned this before, that we're moving the elementary specials to the afternoon, which we've had them kind of scattered sometimes in the morning to try to align the schedule a little bit more with the element, with the middle and high school. So he's been working on that. Boys of summer, Steve's going to talk a little bit about girls of summer. Boys of summer have started their summer program. They were involved with a hike up Really Pond last week. About 12 students participated in that. And Mr. Quinn, and Mr. Lox, and Mr. Webster are advisors to that program. And that's it.
Thanks Bob. Any questions for Bob?
I have a couple of questions. The first one, the specials moved in the afternoon. Is that, is that data-driven, or is that just our schedule-driven?
Well, it's a lot of it with data and trying to make educational, some times in the morning of the elementary school that are not chopped up at all. And by, by, we, there were several things that drove that. We've been trying to work so that we've not eating so early with the elementary students. And so our sessions now for lunch are 11:01 with elementary eating around 11 o'clock. In the past, we've had some of the elementary were eating at 10:15 to 10:30. By moving all those into that slot, it kind of worked out well to have the specials in the afternoon after the lunches were done. And we were able to align some of the schedules in the, in the middle schools, so that opened up those specials teachers to teach in the afternoon. But there was some data pieces to that too.
As well as research pieces. Research has shown that the younger kids need that, they're more alert more in the morning, so they put the reading, writing, arithmetic.
All right, well, some things that I've read also have suggested that physical education in the morning had, had a positive impact. And that's why I was asking, you know, if it was, if it was data-driven, or, I know I'm certainly more alert in the morning, so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, the other question I had was, you said Sandy, was it Sandy Kent would be here?
Yeah.
And that was company-based learning, is that a training?
Project-based learning.
Project-based, okay, okay.
Yeah, which is connected to competency-based education.
Okay. And that's for all staff, or is that for like?
They're eligible for.
Team leaders, or that's what?
Baseball is eligible for.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks Bob. Brian, did you have anything else from the facilities report?
Just a couple of quick ones. We discussed auctioning off some extra equipment.
Oh, yeah. That's what? I think I handed copies.
Yeah.
So we just needed to discuss the approval?
Does that need a formal approval from the board?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. So we need to get approval for auctioning off this extra equipment. In the past, they've done this, and it's worked. Money just go back into the.
It does follow policy as well, policy DN, disposal.
Yes.
And policy DN is in your packet? This is one of the processes that are, has been used in the past and has been successful in the past. Mr. Don, use it.
So we're going to auction off a set of lockers, propane stove, undercounter dishwasher, top load washing machine, electric dryer, two-door propane steamer, four-burner propane stove, hot water storage tank. Does your state have a vote to approve posting the auction?
I would say you're going to vote to go, yeah, to move forward with the auction.
Yeah, but I don't, we don't want to put a date on it, just in case it's.
No.
Correct. So I'll make a motion to approve an absolute auction with no warranties based on the equipment list provided on a document dated June 28, 2017, presented by Director of Facilities and Grounds Market.
Thanks Matt.
That's long.
Can we get a second?
I'll second.
Thanks Brian. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstentions?
Couple of other quick ones. We're just waiting on a few more additional bids to come in for our intercom system, and then we'll have that whole idea together. We've got two more bids that are out. We have one that's in. So we're just waiting to get more of that information. And then, we discussed, we'd like to create some kind of a committee dealing with this biomass and this whole envelope, because it is such a big project, and maybe for sake of getting as much knowledge involved in this project, you know, inviting some, building a committee that can be, you know, include staff, board, as well as some general public that are people that have this kind of knowledge. This is a pretty large project, it's going to be a lot to take on.
Yep.
We could have some additional group put together.
So we do that, just post that we're looking for community members who are interested in joining a biomass committee?
Yeah, and I think, you know, Judy, I don't know if it was Judy or Brian who said that, but there has to be some sort of charge to what the committee is, so I think we want to frame it on how many people we'd like to be involved, and that it's, you know, an informational and gathering advisory committee, I guess.
We really just like to open it up to have people with the knowledge that can come in. So, if it was just full of people that were not a part of it, then it's not going to really help. The idea is that if we can bring some people from the community that maybe have some information and knowledge on these items, that we could come together and kind of work through this project, just so it's the grand size of this project. I think that's, does that make sense, John?
So what would the official charge be for this committee?
I would think to gather information and bring it back to the, to the school board or facilities committee. I mean, they'd be working in conjunction with school board members, but it's not a voting committee, or. We've got to find a due diligence.
And what information are we looking for them to gather, other than what?
Anything?
I mean, they could be the ones that go and visit other properties, and find out, and talk to other schools that have had similar projects done, and what they've found, the efficiencies they've found, and what's worked and what hasn't worked. I would say it's more, you know, investigative and information gathering. I mean, this is a huge project, if it's something that we move forward on. And I think it's, it's something that, you know, I personally feel that it's something that should be opened up to have a couple of members from the community to be involved in as well.
Yeah, no, it's on the agenda here, to discuss the biomass. And I'm just, I guess, I guess we're going to step, what our next step is as a board. You know, my big thing is, what is, what's the financial component going to be, you know, before we start committing all this time?
Right.
Energy down the road. Looking at the presentation they gave us, you know, it was a sales pitch.
Yeah.
You know, and their numbers are off, in my opinion. You know, it's easy to fall in love with the amount of savings here where they say a simple payback in 18.9 years, but that's not the case. You know, it's more like 32, 33 years when you look at the real math of it. I mean, if you use the numbers they gave us, you know, you're basing the fact on, I mean, he's projecting the price of oil to be five and a half dollars 10 years from now, like.
Right.
Seven and a half dollars 15 years from now. If that's happening, we've got bigger problems.
Yeah.
You know, so I think that it is going to save money in the long haul, obviously. It's not going to save money based on the fancy charts they gave us, that's something that's taken into consideration, like.
That's why we need you on the committee.
What's that?
I mean, that's exactly why. I mean, this is, this isn't something that we can, you know, that we can talk about every two weeks without somebody, a group of people that's really willing to dig in and figure it all out, because it's, it won't, it won't move forward, we won't have the information, I don't think, to make a, you know, informed decision, unless we have somebody or a group of five people, you know, whoever, whatever the components are of that group, to, to take, you know, to take a look at it like that, and to visit other schools, and to talk to other people, and other professionals that are involved in it. I don't think we can do that as, as a board, we can't.
That's just my feeling too, and like, based on what you're saying, like, that was a great amount of information, but yeah, it's still like a sales pitch, but we have to take that information as like a starting point and kind of move on from there. And, and when you have a project that it's hard enough to get $4,000 to dig a hole and drop a pipe in it, and we're going to give it like $2 million, you know, end game. You know, I think getting more people involved to get the most amount of information, so we're just not talking about it, where we, we just sit there every two weeks and bang our heads off of it and go, well, we heard about this new thing, and then two weeks later we hear about something else that's new. Maybe, if we can get more information in, that's all I'm trying to do.
No, I'm not, I'm not against having a committee whatsoever. I just think, you know, as a general directional board, I think we need to have some hard numbers about what this is going to cost us. You know, all this is floated around that, oh, you get grants for this and grants for that. But it's, before people start, you know, let's spend a day, you know, take a day off of work and go visit other schools, you know, look at their systems, you know, we should know if that's a direction we're definitely headed, in my opinion. I mean, that's why I don't want to be on any committee.
I don't know, we can say what the committee.
Yeah, I think to make that decision, we should have a committee and do the research.
Yeah.
And this is kind of leading to like, I mean, that's what we said, we want to bring in like a control company, a company that like looks at this and they're going to tell us not, that's just based on like theory, that he'll look at this envelope, he's going to look at this building, and he's going to say, this is what you guys are going to need. Then at least we can take that step and go in some sort of direction. You know, that was my concern.
Yeah, we're not spending any money or.
We put windows in and we don't know why we're putting windows in, other than, I understand safety, I understand that they're falling apart. I'm not, I'm not against those things. I mean, I'm all about being able to get out of a window, and I went and tried them, and you have to leave the building, close a window, it's a little ridiculous. However, I think that as a committee, we feel that this project, it's encasing more than just putting, than just putting, calling it biomass and dropping in a heater that's going to burn wood. It's a lot bigger than that.
Yeah.
And that's, that's where I'm concerned about getting more people involved.
It's heat loss, it's windows, insulation.
We can put a giant furnace in and keep the place hot, but it doesn't make any sense to do it. You're blowing it out one end, and it's just shooting out the other, and you've got grass growing out of that.
But I think there may be some people in the community that have some time, that, you know, to do all of that.
So what size?
Well, let's see what we get.
What was the number?
I would say, let's see what we get for interest.
I don't think we want to base it on what the interest is. I think we want to, we want to have enough, because, you know, if things get too large and too wide, you don't get anything done.
Right, you want to have a chat, for sure.
You know, I would, for me, I was thinking five people, two of which may be school board members, three from the community, whether they be, whatever part of the community, whether it's a science teacher who's interested, or whether it's, you know, anybody else from the community, and submit letters of interest, and the board can decide, you know, based on their letter of interest, what, what, who's on the committee?
I'd say a little bigger, maybe. Maybe the town manager, the fire chief.
I don't think you're going to get.
Some local, maybe like three or four local people. Say 10 maybe, I don't know. Who knows?
10, I mean, I'd be happy to go with seven.
Yeah, I think initially, smaller probably better, and then if we continue moving forward with it, adding more people if it's relevant.
You don't want, you don't want to put a committee together that's going to.
I mean, I understand we don't want 20 people.
In a zillion different directions, because that's what they want, and that's what they're passionate about. I think it needs to be.
I think the more people you have, it's also more difficult to get them together.
Yeah.
Well, out of the seven, you might get five to show up, even if they're.
Right.
And for the initial purposes, I think smaller is totally appropriate.
Yeah, the committee may decide after a meeting once or twice, hey, we want two or three more. So I guess we can, I mean, if that's the rep we want to go next, we can vote to authorize Judy to, to.
We might not get a second, who knows?
Yeah, we might not. But just post that we're looking for interested community members who want to sit on this board and help us in our information gathering.
How many members are you looking at?
Seven?
Seven.
Seven to start. It's an advisory committee. And I think that's, you know, information gathering to advise. And if you know anybody that you think would be good, let them make sure that they're aware of it.
Three board members, you can have up to three board members, are they going to, are you saying three board members?
Well, they're just a part of the committee anyway, probably written in.
So maybe that's six for our community members, looking for our community members.
I would, just, we don't think we should count the board members, it's community members.
All right, how about we do up to three, up to three school board members?
I'm sorry?
Up to three school board members. And then we can fill the rest of it as we choose. And we could, yeah, administrator?
Yeah, you have to have an administrator?
I think it would make sense, yeah.
I'm not saying not to, I'm just.
No, you have to have somebody from the school district.
We didn't, when we did that, we didn't, when we did the committee, what was the last committee we had?
The gym.
No, way before that.
The garage. The garage?
Yep, the garage committee. It wasn't, there wasn't a board, there wasn't administration on that.
We're on position to have administration on that.
I just don't think it's needed, but, hey, cost, cost is my, I'm not saying not to, I'm just saying cost. They've got better things to do than sit on this committee and listen to us. You know what I mean? All it is, is fact-finding, it's one of the people sitting around drinking coffee trying to figure out how to get this thing going.
I like to think it's.
I'm hoping it's a lot more than that on a $100 project.
Well, I know, but I don't see any reason at all to have any administration on the committee, at all. It's, it's got a cost to it, takes away from their time. It's just a committee. That's by two z's.
Okay.
You know, they can.
We waste their time in a lot of different ways.
No, no, I understand, but I think it's frivolous to have them sit on the committee on the bus. That comes later, you know, let them get their facts, let them get their stuff together, let them do their research, and then that can come down. I think having administration there is just a waste of time.
All right, I'll accept a motion to authorize Judith to post that we're looking for committee members to join a joint board committee for the purposes of gathering information on a biomass project and report back to the board in preparation of a potential biomass heating facility.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks Jasmine.
I'll second.
Thanks Erin. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstentions? Anything else, Brian? That was a lot, that's probably it.
There was more.
The flooring's going to be done, should be done this week, we should have our flooring done. And the conduit project should be starting this week as well. We'll go with that.
How, what was the expected time for the conduit project? Time frame to complete, do you remember?
There's a couple of days.
Okay.
So, you know. Expected it's not tomorrow.
Also, the basketball, because we're going to put that, basketball slash foursquare.
We're going to go to a trustment hearing though? We didn't even have a press.
No, no, we're just, we're just letting them know that we're going to look for bids and quotes on what it would cost to do those things.
So we're going to look for bids, go ahead.
Well, I just want to say, I took your paper and made copies, I didn't go do it.
Okay, that's okay. He did a little bit of research, and we found out about doing this basketball court, as well as adding a 20-foot extension to it, just to give it more space for playing, a foursquare. There is one drainage issue that may come arise. The total space would be 3,800 square feet. And he had a bid put together for it, and that we'll discuss in two weeks.
Okay, so, are you guys recommending that we vote to post having a trustment hearing on July 19?
We have a request for bid, right?
We'll put on a request for bids.
For bids, have people bid on it, and then, we have to, we want to do it by the 19th, but we're reviewing the bids that night.
And we get the bids, well, we can have the bids come in whenever.
Yeah, have the bids come in whenever, but, yeah, opening the bids on that night. So I don't know how that works.
We'll put off.
Just then, your next opportunity will be in August.
Right. Kids will be back at school. I mean, if we're going to have them.
We can schedule it, and, and, you know, the bids come in, and if we want to move forward, then we can move forward, we could always cancel it too.
Okay.
It's a big debate.
Yeah. Jump right in.
Good.
Jump right in. With the one meeting in July, that kind of handcuffs us, so if we do decide we want to do something, we might as well have it on the.
Okay.
Posting required, isn't it?
Yeah. So, the feeling is we should post a trustment hearing for July?
Sure.
Yeah.
In the meantime, we're putting it out to bid.
Right.
And we'll have bids by then.
Okay. All right, then I'll accept a motion to authorize Judith to post a trustment meeting for July.
19.
19th school board meeting for the purposes of potentially replacing or renovating the outdoor basketball surface at the high school.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks Matt.
I'll second.
Thanks Erin. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstentions? Anything else, Brian?
Yeah.
All right, before we get to policy with any other committees that has met since school go now, I'm guessing no. Judy, you think there's anything?
No.
No. All right, policy, we don't have a chair yet either, we haven't had many meetings. So, it's in your packet, the last policy meeting, which was on the 14th. Administration presented to us five policies that needed to be updated, so we decided to put them on for first reading tonight, and they are BEA, DFA, EF, EF-R, and GBEA. Those were in your packets. We made minimal changes to these, as many of them were, the changes were done for us because of recent law.
Correct.
So what's your?
You also had two new ones, your EF and EF-R, two new.
Yep, we had two brand-new policies in there.
Correct.
So if people have suggestions, additions, subtractions they'd like to make, now is the time, because this is only first reading.
Yeah, the first one, the BEA.
Yep.
Regular board meeting. So we're changing this, we're updating it, because we changed meetings from Tuesdays to Wednesdays.
Yep.
Last year, year before. You know, what's to say if something doesn't come up, and then we decide to change it again, and we have to go back and change this policy again. I think it would make more sense if it was worded, worded and such that it was, you know, shall take place in the second and fourth week of every month, with the day of the week to be determined at the organizational meeting in March.
I like that.
We're not coming back to this thing again.
That's, because that's the only reason we're really here, is because.
Change days.
To change days.
Right.
And I didn't put the word place in there, so, to take place, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I noticed that after, and I didn't think it was worth making all the copies again.
I think that makes sense to do that. I like that wording. Did you get that wording, Joan?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
The second and fourth week of every month.
Do we want to add two B's to it?
Should be put as needed.
Put the day to be.
So you get July.
I would say, on the end of that, like Tony said, to be determined at the annual organizational meeting.
Right.
Okay.
Thanks Tony. Yeah. Anything else on any of the other policies? None? Okay.
I'll make a motion to move policies BEA, DFA, EF, EF-R, and GBEA to second reading.
Thanks Matt. Could we get a second?
I'll second.
Thanks Tony. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstentions? And also on June 14th.
I'll second.
Thanks Tony, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? And also on June fourteenth. We were presented by administration, the policies that you see for second reading. ACE, GBEA, IHB, AAA, and JR B. And those were presented to us, they need to be updated to. In order for us to be on time and request our, request our federal special education funding. So Jasmine and I were there, we kind of looked at these real quick, and they were all based on Family Education Rights and Privacy Act. So we didn't feel like any of it we could touch anyway, nor could the board, so we just had to put it on the next meeting's agenda, which is tonight, for approvals that we can get our aid, reply for it. Anyone have any questions or comments on those? Then I will accept a motion to approve policies ACE, GBEA, IHB, AAA, JR B, as presented tonight.
I'll make a motion.
Thanks Matt, second?
Second.
Thanks Jasmine. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? That carries. Judy, did you have any business that needed board action?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
I do have a resignation. Nancy Bartlett is resigning and presented a letter to the administration, so I recommend accepting the resignation.
Can we do, is she headed off to a different school?
Yeah, she's heading off to a different school in a new position as well.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Nancy Bartlett and thank her for her years of service to the children in the community.
Thanks Matt, can we get a second?
A second.
Thanks Jasmine. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Any others Judy?
No, that's it.
Okay. Uh, new business? We are good on that.
Yes.
Disposal property?
Correct.
Is there anything else for new business before we move on? Uh, continuing business, biomass, looks like we're pretty good on that, right Brian?
Can I, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Because you had talked about the energy performance contract in PC, maybe bringing in, do you guys want us to bring in Johnson Controls at the next meeting? Do you want, or do you want a separate meeting to then come in? Because they would, they said they would come in and explain energy performance contracts, go through that process. They did say, however, that normally it's something that would be put out to bid, because they, there is a cost to them.
Yes, really.
So, but they, they were more than happy to come in.
It was a free presentation.
Yeah, and they had given us that information at the biomass meeting, with different schools that they've worked with, but.
Yeah, I'd love to have them come in, I don't know what you guys think.
I'd like to.
Yeah.
Is there a way to get the committee, committee together before, so it can be presented to?
It's probably a good idea.
Everybody that's in.
That's a good idea.
We could ask for the letters of interest and put it, I mean, we want to put an end date on that anyway.
Yeah.
The, the difficulty, we probably have the holidays to get a response from people, but, I mean, if we can put it together before, then let them, make them aware.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's.
Yeah, so I'm, like, if people are interested, I'd assume that they know what.
They might be interested after that meeting to be involved, so.
Didn't know if you want it during the board meeting or in a separate meeting. Maybe like before.
Yeah, I mean, five thirty.
At the next, at the July meeting?
Yeah, July seventeenth meeting. If they're available.
Yeah.
If not, I, I would say.
Sooner the better.
Yeah, sooner the better, Mark?
I just want to point out that Jeff Tyree's gonna be here at that meeting too.
That's right.
He's coming during the meeting?
He's during the meeting.
He's during, okay. He's gonna be, he's gonna come in in a half an hour or so, talk with facilities, and then talk to the public.
Facilities, we're gonna be there that night, okay.
I really.
Yeah.
I'd love to see him come in as soon as possible, give a presentation, I know it takes a lot of time, people talk.
We haven't met as a policy committee yet, and before I leave, I'd like to have an opportunity to sit down with you guys.
Man, I don't, I've got Wednesdays blocked off, pretty much, I mean.
I just can't do the twelfth.
Twelfth.
Other than what I can do, the following is the nineteenth, which is our meeting.
Yep.
I guess I also can't do the fifth. That'd be next week, that's, that's next week, that's a little short.
You want, you want to just check what is available?
Other days in the week to do?
We do have Tuesday business happening.
The Wednesday, you guys available the day before, that Tuesday, the eighteenth?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, even the week before, I mean, any day, Sunday.
I mean, or does it hurt to have him come at this time after church, is that like a negative thing to do?
Have what?
No, he could come, he could come.
Have him come at, like, the time.
During the middle of the board meeting? I just don't know how long that could take.
But we're gonna have, the only thing is, we're gonna have Jeff Tyree here for presentation, too, it should be a long, a lot of information.
See what they all are.
Yeah.
Let's shoot for, if we can all make the day before, let's shoot for the eighteenth. Or, you know, if you guys want to do it a little sooner, the Tuesday before, the eleventh. See if he's.
Well, it's just something we have to, maybe we just ask him what his availability is, she does an email or call us, and then we can, we can post it to the public.
Yeah.
I'll just, we'll send that out to you guys.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, shoot for the eighteen, shoot for the eight, uh, the energy performance.
Energy performance, different, biomass, just a first.
We'll shoot for the eighteenth or the eleventh, and if those don't work, then we'll.
See what he's got.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get a couple dates in. Okay. Anything else on continuing?
I have some questions, I guess.
John.
I, I went to see Judith, which was on Monday, Tuesday, about the hiring of Mr. Nelson. I, I would like some more information. I talked with Mr. Nelson on the phone today, discussed kind of what he was doing, what was going on. We discussed it when he retired, I understand, the night he was retiring, it was a big night for all of us. But there was never any discussion after that. I guess I would like some information before we go ahead with doing this, or on what it's gonna cost us, what the hours are, what the terms are, how long it's gonna be.
Don't be know.
And there was nothing in, you know, it wasn't budgeted in a budget season, so I guess as a board member, I mean, the, I mean, it sounded like a great idea that night, me and Mr. Nelson talked about that, but just because something sounded a great idea, doesn't mean we always go ahead with it. I use a book of knowledge, I don't want to ruin this thunder, don't want to discourage him. But I, where I'm coming from was, we know nothing about it. I'm sure that it is fair, but we don't know what the deal is.
You're saying it's a non-publicity? Do you want, we can.
Yeah, discuss it, go.
Thanks, go on. Okay. All right, anything else for continuing?
Okay, so Joanne mentioned scheduling a policy meeting, do we want to try to do that, or?
It doesn't have to be in the evenings, if the policy committee is available during the days. Or at an earlier time in the afternoon, or whatever.
We don't have to do it right now, I guess, we could wait, we could after, but, I mean, my schedule's flexible, yours is fairly flexible, we can work around that.
Okay. All right, let's, let's write the meeting, we'll figure out when we're gonna do it, and then we can post it.
Yeah.
Yeah, just let me know, and I think it would be nice to touch bases before I'm gone.
Yeah, yeah.
And get you.
Okay, sounds good.
And the other thing, under continuing business, at one point, we floated the idea of having Trey Aldrich come in and talk to us about the extent of cell phone use during the school day, how it's affecting our network, his concerns that he has with not just the network, but safety concerns as well.
Yep.
Which is something I want to reopen the discussion about. I don't know if we want to do that July nineteenth. Obviously, I don't think, you know, at the point we're at right now, we probably wouldn't be changing the policy, you know, before school year. You know, and I think the hope is, is that the policy will be followed more closely than it has the last two years, you know, by our students. But do we want to somewhere, I don't know, maybe in August, if it's easier for Trey to be here for that?
If you do August, you could do the first, first board meeting in August.
Right, he was, he was going to present last week, right?
Yeah, I can't remember something.
Last week, he couldn't. Rescheduled.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we could target that meeting.
Okay, or one of the two August meetings. I am out of town on the. Whatever the first one is, the eighth, the ninth.
You're not available?
Right. So if we want to do the second one, we don't have to, I don't have to be here for it, but whatever he's able to attend, the first one or the second one. Okay. Anything else? Staff. Mr. Steve, sorry.
I'm good, and you?
Good.
Um, first, I don't think I've met Brian and Jasmine.
Hi.
You and I have a new wish, and I haven't been here, so, I'm Rebecca Steve, the seventh and eighth grade science teacher, and one of the staff reps that comes to the board meetings. Pretty much just from Heather Krill and I, that the girls' summer began last Tuesday, and we had our second hike yesterday, and our third hike is tomorrow. Um, we have a few more day hikes, and then our overnight to Liberty Springs on Franconia Ridge is July twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth. Also this year, that's new, on the eleventh, we're participating in the New Hampshire Writing Project Workshop at Plymouth State University, where Heather is a guest facilitator. So the girls' summer will be writing with other high school students who are there, participating, who consider themselves writers. And we also will visit the Museum of the White Mountains while we're in Plymouth, and then after our overnight in August, we'll be doing some trail magic up on EAT at the Beaver Pond parking area, as we do at the end of our season, so.
When is trail magic?
The first Tuesday in August.
How many participants do you have?
We have a banner year this year, we've had sixteen.
So are they angels?
Seventh through twelfth grade.
That's awesome.
Go in the fall.
Yeah, going into.
Some sixth to seventh graders are participating, only have two next year's seniors, and we have more that are signed up, we might have, you know, close to, I don't know, eighteen, nineteen on some of the hikes. We've had sixteen on the first two, so.
What, what, uh, do you take them all on the overnight, or is there a?
No, we, we talked about that yesterday, actually, we might not be able to take some of the newer girls that have jumped in, just because the older ones have less time to go on an overnight, if this happens to be a year that works out with their schedule.
Right.
So we try to limit it to ten. You know, nine students, you know, we're just pushing it, and then Heather and I, because the, the forest service typically likes groups not to be over ten.
Sure, yeah.
So, just for impact.
Is this the first year you've done a two-night overnight?
No, we actually did do two-night overnights, and then when I was out with my hip, and we had a temporary replacement, they only did one night. And then last year, we did one night.
Yeah.
But this year, we're, we're bringing it back to two.
What are the dates of the overnight again?
Twenty-fourth, fifth, and sixth.
Twenty-fourth, fifth, and sixth.
So we camp up at Liberty Springs, so you hike all the way up there, and so you have the second day to go and hike on the ridge. Whereas if you only did one night, you'd have to hike back down, not get the ridge, or be pretty tired, and you have all the gear up there anyway, so.
Right.
Why not take advantage of being up there that night? So, yeah, we'll bring it back.
Awesome.
Thanks.
Great. Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very much.
Quiet, quiet gets when I send out the email, everybody's enjoying some of it.
Community, any comments?
Yeah, the last meeting, Vance, I had a couple questions for you, and your answer was, you'll get back to me. When does this getting back happen?
What was the question?
About policies and how you see you work.
Yep. Judith, our policy says fourteen days, it needs to be made available for the public.
Correct, but like I said before, I read that policy to you. It's used, for example, at the last meeting, you presented and approved the first reading, right?
Yep.
So the community had no input on it. Tonight, you just okayed it for the second, so when does the community have that input that it talks about in the policy?
I believe it just says fourteen days before the final.
Wow, there's several that address it, but it says, the board will welcome suggestions for ongoing policy development from citizens, student staff, and the district.
Yep.
And there's not one that talks about, you know, you welcome their input.
Yep, we do.
Right, so how does that happen?
You can, well, the policies, the first set of policies that were voted on tonight, they're, they're just moving forward.
Right, they're voted in second, so on the, yes, your next board meeting, you'll do, just like tonight, you'll move a second vote on it, and the public can't participate until the end of the meeting.
You can participate right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you've already voted on it.
No, we've just moved it forward, they haven't been approved yet.
We can still change.
We can change in two weeks for a second reading.
You didn't approve for first reading tonight, those?
Yeah, but they, they haven't been approved policies, they're just moving forward so that we.
Right, then moving, so at the next meeting, you're saying they're not gonna be on for second reading and approval?
The ones that we voted on first reading tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
But you can, you can make all the comments on those policies right now if you like, because they haven't been approved yet.
And that process had been stopped?
Yeah, in the past, we've made corrections or additions during second reading.
Okay, so you're saying, on the same night, like tonight, if anybody had any questions on the first reading, tonight would be in the night.
Yeah, you can ask right now. Do you have any?
No, I just want to know what the procedure was, I had asked you, and you said you can get back to me.
Yep.
Yes, we.
Yeah.
Um, also, the, the, the comments and input doesn't necessarily, you don't have to be at the board meeting in order to give those comments. So when I said the two weeks, when it's in the policy, it's two weeks?
Yeah, that's the policy, I understand that part of it.
Okay, so anyone can give comments about the policy to the SAU, and then, then I forward that to the board as comments, that's happened before.
And like I said the last time, the whole concern is, over the senior trip, we would talk, last meeting that we were gonna talk about it tonight, which didn't happen. And that's why these people keep showing up, they're concerned with it.
Yep.
And you got a policy, and it says, you know, if there's something that is very concerning, that you welcome their input.
We do.
That's why I'm trying to find out when that is, that's why I asked last meeting.
You asking about those specific policies?
No. Just policies in general.
Okay, well, I mean, for example, policies were posted online by the SAU staff immediately after our meeting two weeks ago. So the policies that were on first reading tonight were posted, and the policies for second reading, when we discussed them last meeting, during policy committee meeting, those were also immediately put on. But again, those aren't anything we can, have been put on anyway, because those are based on federal laws.
Yeah.
When does the agenda become available, again?
Not immediately. The agenda itself.
Well, I, so I get this on Friday.
Yeah, generally, it's probably two, three days prior to.
Prior to, that lists all the policies that are gonna be discussed at first reading.
Right, but, um, like at this meeting, we approved the first reading minutes, the first reading policies to go to second reading, but tomorrow afternoon, I'll have them on the website as second reading.
So even though the agenda isn't ready?
The agenda might not be available for people to see, because that, that, that changes and fluctuates within a few days, because input comes in, and we need to.
Where do you post those policies?
I put them on the actual tab of the policies, where out, the, the school board stuff is, it says policies, and it says first reading, second reading. And usually by the end of tomorrow, I'll have those up, that's, that's priority.
My question is, my question is, if I, if I'm able to pick up my packet for the board meeting on Friday, that says that we are gonna discuss these policies.
It will be on.
Policies are in my packet, is that, is that the same day that it gets posted on the website, so that someone can look it up and then go to the policy tab and say, I want to read this, because this is what they're gonna be talking about, and then I can.
When you pick up your packet, these are the entire things online for people to view.
No, no, she's saying, I think you guys are talking about two different things, she's saying.
The agenda.
Those policies.
The concern is that there's not enough time to, for you to have the heads up. So what I'm saying is, if I know on Friday that we're talking about BEA, DFA, EF, EF R, GBA, as a community member, if I know that on Friday, I can, I can, myself can go into the policy handbook and review the latest policy, knowing that the board's gonna discuss it.
Right.
And may make changes, and then what they, what you can do is have a, have a period to comment during the community meeting, right?
As long as it's before the second.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the first reading policies.
So when I get this, is this already up on the website for the, for the community?
Yes, the same day, it's up there. But the first reading policies would have been made typically, actually, we've had a board meeting, a policy committee meeting, and you guys have decided on which changes we do, and I put the red line through to show you what's being removed, and I add in, I use bold and italics to show the new information. So it's clear what they're looking at.
All right, so if, if it's a policy committee meeting week, do those policies that you're gonna discuss in your committee, are those also available online prior to on Friday?
No, because we don't know what we're doing with them, or you guys don't know what you're doing with them. And say tonight, say if we had a policy meeting tonight, I would take those back, and tomorrow, I would change them and fix up what you guys wanted on them, and then I would put them on the website.
No, I know that, but if, but if this was the first Tuesday.
Yeah.
Of the month, is there any way that the public would know what was gonna be discussed in the committee meeting, the policy committee meeting, prior to that policy committee meeting taking place?
No, typically, we don't, we, I, in the entire eleven years I've been here.
Let's just do that, let's just put those on.
Yeah, that's what my question was. So just, well, the agenda, this is what we've planned, we may not get to everything, we can't make any promises, but this is what our plan is to discuss at the next policy meeting, which is in four days, and that way, everybody has noticed.
So we'll post it on the policy tab.
Yeah, just do that.
Under there, this is what the policy, okay.
Yeah, so this is.
That's easy enough.
Yeah, this is our agenda, this is what we plan to talk about, we can do it, you know, for facilities too, if, if people wanna know, um, and that way, people have the option to go.
They get approval, and.
Review what it is, they can, and, you know, I mean, it doesn't mean that it's gonna be an, always an interactive discussion, but at least they can be there for the discussion, to make up the comments during the community board.
Exactly.
Yeah, no, um, and, and it's all about this senior class trip.
Oh, oh, we know, we know.
Yeah, and, and under a handout that we received back in two thousand fifteen, under effective school board meetings from the New York School Board Association, you know, they talked, and they recommend to boards that, um, if there's a very volatile issue, more time may be required, or the board may choose to have an open public forum on a topic with a different set of guidelines.
Yeah.
And, and again, I'm really basing it on that one topic.
I, I know, in my experience in the last year and a half, we've talked an awful lot in public settings with those who wanna have some input, whether they like what the input, what the, is different, but at least we can talk.
Yeah.
Right, right, no, exactly. But things gotta change, and that's all, I wanna know if that opportunity is available.
I mean, just speaking about those two particular policies, I, I talked to Judith this week, and I, I told her I didn't wanna see those at policy committee, until they were at a board meeting for.
Yeah.
Board discussion first, so after that conversation, you're not gonna see them at policy until the board takes a look at them first, because my feeling is, we have almost half the boards new.
Yeah.
And the board needs to direct committees what to do.
Yeah.
So it's, I mean, it's easy for Tony and Aaron and I to go change policies, but, you know, three of our, or two of our board members are, probably don't know what the heck we're talking about with those policies.
Yeah.
So you won't see those at a policy meeting until they're here first.
Okay, well, I thought they were gonna be here tonight, but.
I think, I think we'd said that, but.
Yeah.
They somehow didn't make it on.
No, that's fine, no, you answered the question, no, that's, that's fine.
I think it just might be good practice too, to have an agenda available, you know, so that people understand what's gonna be discussed, or what we plan to discuss at any committee.
Yep.
You know, I mean, it can change, it doesn't mean we have, I mean, you know, things.
But it might be not ready the next day, after this meeting.
Oh, that's fine.
Well, yeah, 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 but, but if, yeah, if it's, you know, if it's, if it's available when the agenda's available for the board meeting, if it's a separate agenda, I think that, I think that's, I think that's a good thing to practice.
It fluctuates, you know.
And at the last meeting, I asked how many students didn't meet competency, has that been figured out yet?
Eight to twelve?
Yep, I asked that, and you were gonna let me know. It must be, it's kind of a big thing.
We don't have that information yet.
And did you lower the standards last, at the end of the year, from two point five to two, so that more kids were passed through?
We were using two, two point three.
Two point five is passed, did it get lowered to two?
We were using two, we didn't, we were using two point three for eligibility.
What's that plus?
For eligibility.
Leadership plus.
Eligibility was two point oh.
Okay, I was told it was two point five, and then after I brought this up, some people approached me and said, they lowered it to two, and I wondered how.
Yeah, it was two point, it was two point oh, but for eligibility.
So it's always been two.
You're talking to pass the class, or for?
For eligibility, yes.
I know it hasn't been talked about before, I mean, that's why I'm wondering. Um, and you also told me to go to the, to the handbook, and that I'd find that three-pack formula, I can't find that three-pack formula there to explain it to you.
It's in the old handbook. It's not in that draft, it's in the old handbook, right?
I went to the fifteen, sixteen.
Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, sixteen, seventeen.
When you read off your list tonight of disposal items, how about the windows we took out two years ago, were you saving them, or?
I don't even know where they are. What, Mark?
Which trash?
Trash.
And that last meeting, wasn't, um, the recording hasn't been posted on the website, is there a reason?
Yeah, it didn't work. Last two meetings, it didn't work. Hopefully, it's working now.
And you're talking about fixing things around the, the building there. Several years ago, we talked about the fence out back here, it's pretty much in disrepair, we were worried about safety, and there was supposed to be a price gun, it's never come forward.
Around the elementary playground, yeah.
Yeah, it's in bad shape, it's disrepair. Two years ago, it was supposed to come forward as a proposal, never happened. Um, we worried about other things that probably aren't quite as important. Where's that? You know, I, I know you don't have any answers, and the other thing is, I was out here a couple of weeks ago with a little fella, I went up to the playground, and we talked about, we were told that the swing's gonna get lowered. The hole is deep, you know, it's, it's a maintenance item, maybe a week it should be, the back wall should come back in, it ain't a matter of, as you keep blowing the swings, kids are gonna dig the drain. It was very unsafe. I wonder if that can be addressed. It's pretty simple, you know, bring the back wall back in there. You know, you can keep lowering the swings, but you know what they do, they drag your feet.
The hole would just get deeper.
Keep them deeper, the other day, it was very unsafe for little fellows.
Vance, I have a question, uh, maybe to Mike, what was the first policy you were referencing, as far as?
Numbers?
Yeah, the letters, you had a public input on the policy.
BGB?
No, it's not, there's nothing about public input to BGB.
BG?
BG?
BG is one of them. That's one of them. BGA. The other one was your, your reading from the, uh, School Board Association, effective school board meetings.
Thank you.
What was the last one you said, Mike?
The, uh, effective school board meetings, it was.
Oh, okay, thank you.
It was adopted January tenth, two thousand fifteen, at the delegate's table.
Anything else?
Oh, oh.
Um, so even though you told us last time it was gonna be a discussion about the class trip, you're not discussing it?
No.
Okay.
I'm not sure why, I just, yeah, I apologize, but, uh, didn't get on the agenda. Anything else? Pat?
Um, I asked last time about the quarter works, and I told who it was, I was just wondering, uh, and how many people put in, did Jim, Jim Young put in a, uh, a letter of interest for that? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, and, you know, and I wanna make this perfectly clear to everybody in this room, so nobody goes to Star's trouble, 'cause I'll talk to him first thing in the morning anyway. Nothing against Jim Fadden, but why wouldn't you bring a guy back, who everybody in this room said did an outstanding job last year, to do the same job this year with the flooring? Cause he has a, he has knowledge of it, and he worked with the contractor last year. Why, why would you change the floor sort of work, if the same guy put it in, and he did such an outstanding job last year?
I don't know.
I know, I know the board is just rubber stamp, when the, when the, the administration comes in and asks to do something, maybe you guys just say yes, but I'm just wondering, is there, can anybody give me a, any type of reasonable answer on that?
I mean, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, I don't, we don't get into personnel, I just know that we pay administration a lot of money, so I'm assuming that when they bring a name forward, they've, they've got reasons, and they've done their due diligence.
You know the definition of so, right?
Yeah, thanks Matt.
And again, I don't care who it is, I don't care if it's Bob, John, anybody else in this room last year, R two D two, I was on the budget committee last year, there's no money for any consultant, where's the money coming to pay for a consultant?
What consultant are you talking about?
Uh, whatever job John brought up earlier that's going into non-public, cause it can't be discussed.
No, I think he's referring, are you referring to when there was a, um, teacher's aide, or a.
No, he's referring to.
He's talking about the analyst that, that's gonna do the energy?
No, he's talking about Bob.
We're talking about, that John brought up that said, uh, Bob's been hired for, or Bob's going to be hired for. Is, was that a misspeak on his spot?
No, no, we are going into non-public tonight.
Okay, no, I understand you're going to non-public, I'm just wondering, if you're hiring somebody, where's the money coming from? I didn't see anything in the budget card.
I don't have the budget in front of me, I can look into that for you, and get back to you next week, next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, that's a general budget anyway, just, just to be clear, whether, you know, you can earmark and make line items all you want, but if, we know that things change, whether it's personnel related or facilities related, sometimes you have to, you move money around, I'm just making that as a general statement, not specifically to this situation, but that's how, that's how budgets work.
No, I, I, I understand.
Okay.
That it's not a line item budget, okay, but I also understand that the lines that they present to the budget committee, is supposed to be fairly close to what they're doing, and that they don't have to use that money for that specific thing, alright? But I don't know how much money is going to be paid for this project, but it just seems to me, if it's, you know, it could be a substantial amount of money, depending on how many hours, and if that money's not in the budget, how much money are you gonna be able to move around? Are we padding the budget that much, that we can move around that kind of money?
I don't know, you brought it forward.
Uh, be advised that, you know, I was opposed to the, a lot of that budget, okay?
The budget committee, right.
And everybody made, everybody made it, you know, tried to make it well-known at the public hearing, that I was the one that was opposed to the budget, but that's okay. Okay, I stand by my, I stand by my feelings.
I think you said nay, that's you.
Yeah, that's right.
Anything else, or anyone else? I'll poll, uh, should we poll board to go into non-public? RSA ninety-one dash eight colon three, matters that may adversely affect the reputations of persons other than board members?